It's green.
Okay. It is 6:35 on November the 16th, and I call this meeting to order. And we'll do roll call first. Mayor Protan Villa Logos. Councilmember McGovern.
Here.
Councilmember Styler. Councilmember McClabb.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton. And I'm Mayor Glass. If you'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And then to the Texas flag. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. And then please remain standing. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, for this beautiful little town of Martindale. And Lord God, thank you for all of these wonderful citizens that have come out. And Lord God, we just ask for your help and your discernment in our governing of this city tonight and in dealing with finances. And Lord God, we just ask that you help us to remain on task and to keep our words gentle and sweet. Lord God, as always, I just praise you and thank you for the gift of salvation. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Okay. Public comments. So our first public comment is Don Foster.
Guys, believe in Martindale shirt on. Look at that.
Yeah, I did. Right here.
That looks long.
Yeah. Mayor, councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen. Clear P by definition for Westers. A place set apart to contain books, periodicals, and other materials for reading, viewing, listening, study, or reference. As a room or a set of rooms or building where books may be read or borrowed. A public body organizing or maintaining such establishment. A collection of man trips, public cages, and other materials for reading, viewing, listening, study, or reference. A collection of any materials for study or enjoyment as films, musical recordings, or maps. A commercial establishment lending books for a fixed charge. A lending library. A lending library such as our own Martindale Community Library. Not a bad idea for a small town community busting at the seams with growth on the horizon and more and more children for whom a library can only do good and help form good citizens. The library has done so much good in the past and is doing good for our community presently. So it should continue to bring along our children in a world of learning and adventure that books give us all. I petition your help today and in the future to help our library grow with our little town as we become a city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Beth Harper.
First of all, I want to thank the city of Martindale, especially the mayor and councilmember Clinton for allowing the I-Galon Delta fraternity to use the tools that the city purchased last year. They were used by the fraternity. There were 15 guys that showed up, and they came to Martindale to work on eight properties and bedrooms. I hope they did a good job. I did not. And next up, the 13th annual tree lighting will be Friday, December 1st from 5 to 8 p.m. Santa's going to ride through the neighborhoods on the fire truck. Now, we've got the tire department on board. Also, police partners on board. Anyway, Santa will be handing out bags of candy to the children. Then he'll be here downtown to listen to the children's wishes. Inside Crook Store, there's in 413 Main Street, there's vendors, I think there's like 10, 15 vendors be selling all kinds of homemade items. The library will be selling popcorn cookies, beverages, and so on as a fundraiser. And the friends of the library also have rapid ticket. And somebody else talked about that. Tonight, she'll be voting on the library service agreement. After many months of consideration, the library board voted last week to approve the version that's in your agenda packet. Thank you, Jared and the mayor for listening to our concerns and including most of them in the copy that you'll be voting out. Thank you to the city for the $24,000 that you approved here in the bunch of books shop.
Thank you. Okay. Next speaker is Emma Dixon.
Hi, I'm Emma Dixon. I live in Lockhart, and I've been volunteering at the Martindale Library for about a year now and recently started working there on a peer specialist. And just in that time, I've been able to see what a fantastic resource it is for this community. I see how often parents come and bring their kids and how many activities it hosts. And it's just, even in the surrounding communities, I've seen what a fantastic influence it has on just this whole area. Sorry, I ran out of notes. But thank you for your time. I just wanted to talk about it because I just really enjoyed my time with the library. And it's run by community volunteers largely. So I just, it's obviously something people want to see more of. So thank you all for the support of it.
Thank you. Okay. And our last speaker is Dorothy Jo McGovern.
Hi, Dorothy. I'm piggybacking on very bad. And the library is doing their draft auction. And I'm not sure if you don't know that. So I wanted to let you know. We're having the, we're pulling the tickets and seeing the winners on some first at the tree lighting. It'll be at 7:30. I think Santa's going to be the one pulling up tickets for the big winners.
Who's Santa?
Santa Claus is Santa. Sorry. It's okay if you were. If you don't know, there's what we're raffling off is a generator overnight trip to Louisiana. And our neck chairs. Wine cooler that's filled with wine. It's filled with wine and a fire pit. Each ticket's $5, or there's five for 20. If you don't know about it or you want some more information, just hit me up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I had a few things basically to announce that I just wanted to get on record. Jared will talk about this a little bit more, but I did send an email of the corrected letter for the 90 days extension for the MOD grant. They had given us 90 days from the day we asked for it, which cut us 30 days short. So then we asked them for a corrected letter, and then they made it from December 1st, when the grant was due, to March 1st. So I did email that to the city council. The MOD grant, the $2.3 million.
Oh, the other road grant.
That we're working on. Jared worked on the contract for the towing this last Monday and got that all signed. So that, you'll be seeing the towing signs in the parks very shortly. I think Adrian was working with them too. They didn't want to put as many signs as what we had in the contract, but we said, no, you got to have them 25 feet far. I put in the, for your information, the Night Sky brochure. We were going to have it printed professionally. I mean, we are. It's at the printers. It just didn't get back in time to show you the really nice version. But Jared put this together to enforce.
Our intern, our planning zoning intern, Allison, did outstanding job on this.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that.
I want to take her credit. She did the creative work.
Oh, okay. But this is letting the public know what the requirements are for Night Sky. So that's good.
I was going to ask a question. And I see here that it says that outdoor light fixtures fully shielded, they have to be shielded. But I'll find out if that is included if you have a bug light in there.
Oh.
You know, because bug lights aren't as bright, but.
Boy, you're detailed, dude.
Well, you got your bug light. But it says you have to have.
I might have to change lights in front of my house. They're pretty bright, but they are shielded. And then the siren test, obviously, it didn't work. We don't know why it didn't work, but.
Well, we have tests.
Hector and Hank from the emergency services are contacting the people who made these because they've got brand new batteries in them. They, the county foot the bill for the brand new batteries, and we thank them for that, but they're still not working, so.
No, I have a question about that too. I'm sorry. So who pushes the button?
They do at the, in Lockhart, at the emergency services.
Yes.
So it would be Hector and Hank that would push that button.
They're laughing at me.
I was saying.
So it's pushed out of Lockhart. Okay, thank you.
Okay. And that's all I have. So I turn it over to city administrator.
Yeah. I'll start off with personnel update. Our assistant, the city clerk, utilities clerk, Christian. He has less than, she's resigning. She's taken a full-time position with the Navarro ISD. So we wish her well. She's done a fabulous job for the city. We'll be sorting this. We hope to backfill that position as quickly as possible. We've already began interviewing candidates. On the court, we, I met with the judge about the court staffing. We look to increase that staffing, as it was called, for our budget. If you recall, up to five days. A judge's recommendation was there may not be enough work in the court right now to do five days, maybe just go to four. But still, we're looking to do a hiring action to bring on another court clerk part-time for that position. Not probably get posted in the next couple of weeks yet and maybe making a final hire shortly after the first of the year. And then personnel related, we'll talk more about it in an upcoming council meeting. But Dwayne and I have been working on the medical benefits. Our rates went up by quite nearly $300 an employee. And part of it was due to the way that the Texas Health and Fitness Pool, which is quasi T-mel. They segregated small cities from the rest of the pool because small cities' utilization rates are higher than the rest of the pool, which is really unfortunate. I intend to send a strongly worded letter to our board rep for our region because removing City Martindale from the pool means that we're being treated differently than larger cities who have more negotiating position outside of the pool to negotiate rates directly with these companies. Martindale, with the limited beneficiaries that we have, we're essentially forced in a position where buying insurance, more or less, on the Obamacare market, which is extremely expensive. And by the pool pushing us out, we're getting those kind of rates. Partially, and then, so that's going to have some impact on how we allocate personnel costs. Court being about five days a week might only four may alleviate some budgetary stress on that. But we'll talk more about benefits in an upcoming meeting as it relates to HR policy. And so we'll standardize what those benefits look like going forward. Until that time, we're going to continue to use the existing benefit rate structure, which is the city pay for 100% premium for the employee only. And then if employee family members, those are on the expense of the employee. The, we have the ability to get out of a current plan with a 30-day notice. So we're not locked into this for another year. So it gives us some flexibility. We went ahead and did it, but we'll bring it to council and talk about more as it relates to broader benefits package discussion as part of that handbook.
Well, I had a question about that. So the rate applies to all city employees, whether they be full-time or part-time?
Only the beneficiaries. And so we only have four beneficiaries of medical benefits currently in the city. So it only applies to them. Unfortunately, the rates also go up for their family and things. And so for some employees, you know, if they're having their whole family being covered under that new rate structure, it's a big hit. It's a big hit. And. Mine's like 40%. Yeah. And our, our police force, you know, their salaries aren't the highest. And so it can be a little bit of a strain for them. So it's disappointing for them, disappointing for the city, and disappointing all over. So we can thank inflation for that. We can thank the Texas School for pulling small cities out of the larger pool.
Do they give a reason why?
Yeah. Two reasons. First one was that many small cities have low deductible plans and high utilization. And so that costs insurance companies who cost to shield them like more money. The belief in a macro sense is that small cities have sweetheart deal health insurance plans to attract employees. City Martindale, however, has done the prudent thing and have already switched our employees to a high deductible plan to lower the premiums on the city to a reasonable extent. So to go, to take that path forward anymore would be really unreasonable at this point. Deductible plans have like 7,000 an employee when they don't have salaries or the ability to save in health insurance accounts to even match that. So. So that was one thing is the general feeling of people in Austin is that small cities have sweetheart deals and they should pay for it themselves. We got lumped in that, unfortunately. The second thing they said is, as it relates to Martindale specifically, is that our utilization, the amount of premiums that we pay versus the amount of benefit that the insurance was paying out was roughly 150%. And so the insurance is trying to, the companies are recovering cost from prior year utilization on current employees, which may also, as we talk about benefits, structures, the ability even to have family members on plans. Hate to do it, but that's something that could possibly change the rates maybe. Overall, bad news story, unfortunately.
Jared, can you tell me the positions that, since you said there was four, can you just tell me the positions?
It is all full-time employees plus the city accountant is a beneficiary as well.
That's fine. Reofficer.
I'm sorry. My, the chief of police does not.
Are they all 40 hours?
Oh, that's right.
The city accountant is not, but it's included as part of his benefit package.
And, yeah, that plan requires 20 hours to participate.
So everybody else is full-time and then one 20-hour? So four full-time?
No, no. Three full-time, one full-time, and one on part-time. So, and that answers your question. Good news is, it's, I already had some buffer in the budget. We didn't have rates yet. The buffer wasn't enough. Thank you. That's that. Going on to the grant updates, if I can. The, well, tonight, we're discussing the drainage and sewer improvements along Northwestern Road and the design. So that is well on top of everybody's front line. The method of distribution, as the mayor said, that's the additional grant project we discussed at the last meeting of roughly $2 million to do something else. Got that extension through March to submit our plans. I would, I'd encourage the council to consider, once they have the Northwestern Road figured out, transition immediately into making the decision on that mod. And then we received the Resilient Community Program grant. This was a $300,000 grant to help us develop a new comprehensive plan that incorporates updated building codes, flood ordinances, land use planning, zoning, and other things that take into account natural hazards, primarily flooding, but potentially others. We had a kickoff meeting with the general land office this last week to finish, kick off that contract. And we'll begin work with our grant administrator on that in the next week or two. What that's going to look like for the community going forward is there'll be several town hall-like events where the community can engage on this comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan has a 20-year plan horizon. So it's looking very far in the future. And we're trying to get ahead of growth, if you will, and consider what the land uses need to be in the future and what steps to take. As a practical matter, the comprehensive plan includes a land use plan. That land use plan becomes the basis of your zoning ordinance. And so this would, this would tie into a zoning ordinance update at the conclusion of this planning process.
I thought the last master plan was at 98?
97.
97.
Yeah. Very fortunate that we got this grant, something that was in our own community-based strategic plan, a five-year plan, to get this grant. We got it. I cannot be more excited about. The other grant that we submitted was for sewer improvements that has a matching fund of $10,000. We, preliminary scoring shows that we're going to do it for the first round of funding. We expect to receive the contract, that we expect to receive the grant. We just haven't got the contract yet. And that's going to cover some irrigation improvements at the treatment plant and also some upgrades at a coffee station. So hopefully, we'll hear something soon. I know we've been reaching out, getting for updates, but it's with the state. The transportation assistance grant, this was going to be the shared youth path and sidewalk systems downtown to go from the, essentially the triangle by the post office downtown to the parks. Unfortunately, we are not going to get that grant. The state received over 320 applications totaling over requests of over $1.4 billion. However, the grant only had $344 million. And we weren't part of that. So.
How close were, do they know how close we were?
I'll ask. I don't, I don't know.
Top 50, 20%.
You'd have to be, you'd have to be in the top 20% to get funding. Who knows? We're somewhere in the bottom 80%. You know, I don't know how close we are. However, the materials that we use to develop that grant could be used to other grant opportunities. There's a rural area community development block grant that funds similar type projects. We could, should be able to refresh, recycle the same, you know, plans into other grants. And so I don't want to let that be the last thing I would cotton for this idea. I think there's still opportunities to use the work that the engineers did.
Oh, we've, we've got it, man. We, I think we're, we got the best, look at our backyard, man. I mean, how many towns have a beautiful spring-fed river? And again, that's my issue with the state and with the county not supporting Martindale because they all come here. And they're going to come more and more, so, but again, that's.
I think the rural area community development block grant might be less competitive. I don't think the state was expecting this to be as competitive as that.
Is it a state that was funding, that we all find to?
Texas.
Texas.
Yeah.
And the rural crop block is also the state?
There, there's.
The USDA grant, right?
There's, the funding for almost all the grants managed by the state trickle down from the federal government through different, if it's HUD or USDA, these other grants. So they're, the money's coming from somewhere else besides what oftentimes how these grants work is federal grants. The state applies for the grant funds for the whole state and contracts to manage those in a certain way. And then subcontract that grant received out to communities, City Martindale. So, yeah.
In the future, is there any way we could find out who got the grant and what they did with that grant money and what kind of project they did?
Oftentimes, they'll publish lists. We can look at that to find out. Typically, we score pretty well if they include metrics regarding NY benefit and low, medium income criteria and other things where diversities and socioeconomic diversity. We score pretty well on all those type of metrics. So I'm wondering if, you know, even if we rise to the top in the points, it might be competing with similar projects or, who knows? Maybe someone got a sweetheart deal because they're working on a high-visibility project that took a lot, who knows? We'll find out. I don't think they have the full list published yet. I think once everything gets contracted, then.
Jared, just real quick. So I've been here, like, we've been talking more about grants and whenever we do. So I would like, like, if we could, if we could have like a list of, you know, the grants that we've already applied to, if they're pending. And then I would also like to see, like, our grants that are approved with the approval date, like, by when we should use them by, and then like the amount. Because I think it would be better, I don't think we get like written reports on the.
Put together this, that, here's a good guide. I can email that to all the city council, but you can have that.
And then, so whenever we, we as a city are deciding, because like to go for grants, who's making the decisions on what grants to go after and who's completing the grant applications?
Most, most of the time, whenever a grant opportunity comes up, if it's going to cost the city's money to develop the grant post materials, we bring that to council for approval. If it's a, I know we've done grants in the past where it didn't cost any money and you're able to write an application in-house with your own staff, we have not taken that to council. The, was it such who, how decision what grants was?
So, yeah, it was like, who decides what grants to go on? Who's like researching the grants? I know you said that we as a council, for a big one, that we've making, we've made decisions on that as a vote.
For researching grants and finding grant opportunities. It happens several ways. There's some grants that are annual opportunity grants that do rural area community development block grant. Oftentimes, because we have prior grant recipients, we're on listservs. So we get emailed about grant opportunities. There's a grant opportunity right now for hazard mitigation related to the winter storm. Sort of for like facility hardening and things. But the city of Martindale, the city itself wasn't impacted. Water pump, maybe. But the city itself wasn't impacted by that event. So we didn't really think we'd go forward with something like that. Some of that is a judgment call that I make with staff or with the mayor. And it, some of it's workload dependent. Like, right now, we have, what, six, seven grants, kind of just various stages of idea to like, to open to close the contract and capture it, to executing it. So, you know, the business capture kind of decisions, a lot of times, we're thinking about that with the staff. What do we have the capacity to do? What do we have the ability to do? What's required of the grant? Oftentimes, if there's a high matching contribution requirement, that's going to disqualify us. So we don't bring every opportunity the city council to weigh in on. But we do bring those that we think we have a competitive advantage or ability to go for. And. And the cost of pursuing that opportunity makes sense.
Yeah, and see, I just think like, for me, it would be helpful just to know, like, I like to see it more like in writing, instead of like, hey, we're voting on a grant today, we got the 2.5 million, you know, like the other one that we're doing the globe, that one.
Yeah, that one dropped a dead blue sky.
Yeah.
I had no idea it was coming, and then one day it's like, oh, by the way, you're getting an extra $2 million. And I said, why? He said, the present federal administration decided to bless you with more money. So, okay.
Well, we had asked Jessica about the sidewalks, and so that could be where it came from.
Oh, the sidewalk thing, we did ask if there was, because we were trying to make a decision. We want to do a sidewalk program, there's several opportunities. Do we do the community development grant? Do we, or do we do this transportation assistance grant? Kind of came up with the sewer improvements, how do we, the sewer improvements, what program do we put that project on? And we've worked with our grant administrator, we've worked with in the past to get some preliminary advice on those things, and then brought it. So, it would be difficult to give a whole list to council. Here are all the grant opportunities that we could possibly apply for, here's an assessment of each one.
I would say just the ones we've applied for.
Yeah, we could do that.
A real quick question, is the county been proactive with you guys, working as a partnership? Because they have a grant, full-time grant rider, are they?
I think he just retired, but they might.
He's got a replacement.
So, the county has approached us in the past, but not in the wild. So, I know when the hazard mitigation grant came up, they were looking at doing a bridges project within the county. Martindale had at least one bridge that was included on that submission, didn't get funded. We've worked with them on FEMA buyout grants, that was county-led. They've worked with us to try to find potential recipients of that grant opportunity, and we've worked with them there. I know that in the past with Dennis, who was a prior full-time grant rider, he was always really receptive to helping us out, being a year bounty, you know, listing board and giving us ideas on things. But unless there's something that they're already targeting or already committed to targeting that might benefit Martindale, they're probably not proactive in reaching out to us. It's not like, it's not like we're having a working group that's saying, hey, where can we team up on this grant? It's, if the county's going for this grant, we think Martindale might make sense.
Is it, is there a possible, because, you know, I probably contact Ed Thuryo every couple of months, and I'm harping on all the time, because their people in their county come to our town, you know, for our parks. And I think they need to be, in my personal opinion, how the rest of the council feels, be more proactive with us, because, as I've said multiple times, there's hardly any parkland that has rivers on it. It's a real shortage in this state. And then you've got a high-growth area, and their area's booming, I don't know what we could do, but.
We can't, we can't really force the county to come to us to do this. I mean, at the staff level, I could ask them, hey, would you be interested in? It's likely going to be, have to be led through the political policymaking process with the county judge and their body to say, this is, we need to work with the city or directing staff to work with the city or something like that to really make it priority, otherwise we're just kind of going with our hat out saying, you know, please help me, I'm busy.
Could we as a council help in any way?
You could say, here, Codwell County, we're going to donate this land to you, so it could become a Codwell County park.
We could just drop it on their doorstep, that sort of way. I mean, if you wanted to do it.
Uh-huh, for you to get county help, I'm sure that they're going to want something in return. So I think if you wanted to donate land and.
Oh, you know, I feel about that, I mean, I think a regional park would be fantastic, that's just my opinion. But I've harped on Ed for the last several years on that, but it is a huge shortage. I mean, and they, you know, we're part of the county, but I'll leave it at that.
Keep on with your, you know, your crazy person. Try to influence it through the political process. They don't have, they don't have the equivalent of a county manager, county administrator you can really go to. I mean, the mayor could reach out to the.
Ed Thuryo.
And the works, we got the head, you know, trying to negotiate something that way. But it's hard for me as city administrator, Martindale, to go back to staff and help me out.
I'll work on that, I do, I do bug him quite a bit about that, I have the last several years. But, because they really need to come up to bat, I think the state does too, but that's possible.
The city could pass a resolution requesting something, so none of that has the full force of, you know, not just my cloud opinion, but the opinion of the council.
Well, in Proposition 14 dealt with state lands, we could always donate it to the state. Just kidding, just kidding.
Better have a good, solid contract.
Yes.
You better have Bud look at it real close.
There you go. The last thing that's out there, as far as opportunities, that's early in the grant capture process, it's not necessarily a grant, but something we talked about before, is Texas Water Development Board preliminary application for a new sewer facility. And so, we're having some preliminary discussions with engineer on devising that out. What is it we're going to kind of ask for, what are we going to do? Now, Water Development Board doesn't give these things up free, but they do have forgivable loans, which are basically free. Some of this is going to have an interplay with how we do development agreement, talk with developers we know in the region. Once, here in the next month or two, probably at the first of the year, we'll have a conversation with council on, here's a strategy that I think we should pursue. That preliminary application closes typically February, March, not very. So probably have a conversation in January about what is we want to do. We don't know whether to make the size just a little bit bigger than what we have now, or a lot bigger than we have now. Considering that it's a loan, that we hope that it qualifies for forgiveness for, it's still a loan. And it's hard, and a new facility is a, you know, $3 million. Can't service a $3 million debt on only 200 customers, you know? So, that's where it becomes a negotiation with these other things, other developers saying, we're applying for this, can we get a letter of intent that you would join us if we get it? And we can be your retail provider, for them it's a win-win, all right? In doing that, you may not, we may not be able to negotiate a full development agreement with these guys though. So, there's going to be some, like, we've had people who have left the ETJ over the inability to come up with a development agreement before. We're probably not going to entice them to come up to a development agreement anymore, other than maybe signing on to be a retail customer. And that might be the best way that we get. But we'll have a further conversation when that kind of comes, when you consult the engineer a little bit more about how we structure it, what we want the plant to look like, and then we get the council saying, this is our thoughts, here's how we've tried to proceed, get concurrents for changes, and then make those connections.
So you're dealing with Turk offers?
Yeah, and Turk subcontracting with, looking to subcontract out the actual design of the plant.
So I recommend that David try.
I totally agree.
Yeah.
Then we suggest that he.
Well, we've tried to have conversations, I know the mayor's really good about connecting with them. Once, once it makes sense to bring him on, we'll do so. So far, a little bit lacking on specifics coming from that particular organization and that person. So, hopefully, we're, we'll get more engagement as we show progress, maybe they'll show some progress.
I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to him.
Okay.
I'll reach out to him.
Yeah, because he canceled the last meeting.
Okay, I'll reach out to him.
So, I, so just to ask, you said that the two developers then, about 200 acres have officially pulled out of our ETJ?
Uh, yeah, there's, there's, there's two, yeah, there's two that have gone through. And several hundred acres, I can't remember the exact. You know.
That's all, thank you.
Uh, over, over a thousand potential homes, 2,000 potential homes.
That's what's critical about a treatment plant, we could offer that and charge them outrageous impact phase if we could.
It's all negotiation, because we're not in the same position. We're asking their, we're basically asking for their help in us getting the loan, because we're going to need their houses to service it. And one of the things, one of the outstanding questions we have now is, how is the Water Development Board going to view a prospective or speculative application? It's very easy for them to approve something that already has an existing customer base or near certainty. But if we're trying to do a speculative build of a plant, how much are they going to sign up for that? Are we still going to be able for these grant, you know, loan forgiveness opportunities if we're doing a speculative build? So, that's the current question we're working through now, while the engineers are figuring out who to do the design. So, if one, the class member wants to participate in the design product, now's a good time to make those contacts.
Will.
But we're still trying to figure out what this event might look like as far as the grant capture.
The money.
Is Chief Ward there?
Chief's still too, if I could look.
He was in the office.
Are we doing the account first?
I'm thinking we could go on to the chief and then to the library agreement. And then, because the report is kind of going to go with 3.2, and then we'll do those two together. Because there's so many people waiting to hear about the library.
Oh, speaking of that, can you, how many paper ones is it? Adrian? Who's on Zoom, you put that up?
We have nine, but seven are the public, there's city staff.
Okay.
Okay, chief.
Tell us some good days, but.
Not much to tell, but.
That's good news.
So, we went to October 23, we had 97 citations, wrote 66 actual tickets and 31 warnings. Our patrol activities, we had 10 animal calls, it was a lot of animal calls. Some of those were the same two dogs that we talked about before, but we got those picked up. Worked with animal control, and we got those picked up.
We've had a lot of dogs being dumped, haven't we?
We have. A lot of them, a lot of them are really at the bridge, you go down to the bridge and dump them, and which way they go, if they come our way or the other way, but we end up with a lot of them here. We had three city ordinance contacts. We, the parks, parks have slowed down, so we've only did 26 park checks this past time. We had 21 calls for service, three incident reports, 12 assist to county, 15 motor assist or public assist, one traffic control, two crash reports, and one office report. On code enforcement, we had checked for unauthorized buildings, RVs or permits. We had three hung up, nine of the placards for the warning placards on the doors. He wrote five reports, he worked on it, he put his time down for National Night Out, and identified surveillances for habitation in three. That was for the month of October. Any questions on anything you did?
Good report.
Easy, yeah.
Simple, simple.
When, so you think you might have to enforce more tall grass or weed ordinances because of the rains that have come, and I just see some weeds in premier spots that are like six feet high?
Let us know what you see, and we travel around and we'll put the little door hangers out when we see people, but really, people that mowing the grass and keeping up with what it looks like.
It looks much, it looks great, yes, it really does.
Yeah.
If you see any, just let me know that I dress, and we'll go by and leave them a hanger and say, you know, notice to let them try to take care of their stuff.
Hey, what's the record speed on 80?
Oh, I don't even have no idea, I think we got a 90 something, yeah, I should be prepared for that. I know, I should put it on there, yeah, I know I got a 99, I think.
Likely in court today, and someone told me to tell me about an 125.
Really, Tom?
Yeah.
That must have been out of the top. We're going to give you, we're going to give you a warning.
Oh, I have, I have one more, so, for the most part, the gravel trucks that you've seen coming in and out, are they abiding by the speed limits?
Pretty much, so we got one the other day, we got, we actually wrote us one of our citations, it's passing and no passing dump for an 18-wheeler.
Good.
Passing out there, and then we had one, we actually arrested the driver, he had a warrant, we stopped him for speed, and he had a warrant for his arrest for aggravated assault out of Harris County, so.
Good.
Arrested him.
Good job. Those gravel trucks want you outlaws.
I mean, we're rather good at those.
Yeah, appreciate it, Tom.
Thank you. Okay, let's, which one is library, oh, 3.3. Let's go to 3.3, since so many people are waiting for us to talk about that. And Adrian, how's that also up on the screen?
This is the one with the. I'll then bring the right one up. Let me, let me get it here. One second, guys.
So, in the meantime, you should have a paper copy in front of you. Track changes within the document, underlined and struck out parts, there you go. The font that is in red is reflective of changes that the city council made after our last meeting, or in our last meeting. This, this agreement was provided to the library, and their board of directors reviewed it and provided comments. There is one substantive item that remains unresolved, that they would prevent them from agreeing to the contract at this time. That's under responsibilities regarding financial statements. And so, the library rejected our proposed agreement and scrolled back, so let's see there. They rejected the proposed agreement and countered with language under that paragraph that would provide Martindale only with the financial information required by nonprofits in the library, during the library's business hours, including IRS Form 99. And so the issue for city council tonight is whether to accept or reject that requested change. If you accept this requested change, then that would complete our negotiations and the city would enter into a contract with the library with that change. If you reject that change, then I would suggest the council discuss and provide guidance this evening on what to counsel with as it relates to these financial reports.
Okay, I had a question.
All other items have been resolved, and this is the last remaining issue.
I had a question then about the change that they wish to do where it says during business hours. Does that mean that only a person can come in and talk to a person during business hours and get that information? It's not recorded to where they can see it on a, on a website or their website? Why is it particularly demanding to say during business hours?
This is, this language, I think you should just take it as a space according to this planned meeting. So, this is, the city of Martindale or its representatives would only receive the financial information by going to the library during their business hours and reviewing it, only to the extent that it's required, assuming by law or some other policy, such as IRS Form 99. So, at, at least, all this does is allows me as city administrator, possibly the mayor, and the mayor, maybe Dwayne or somebody else in the city as a city representative, walking into the library, reviewing the IRS Form 99.
What, what do other cities do?
Other cities manage a library as part of a city department, or it's independent. Not many cities, though some do, have a contract with a particular library.
This is unusual.
Not that unusual, I mean, it's obviously contemplated under the law as a requirement. I think, if you ask the library, if the chair wants to recognize, the mayor wants to recognize libraries, they might know examples of other cities that sponsor libraries to the contract, but. of, of other cities that sponsor libraries to contract, but you know, Tim Marcus, I don't believe does it this way.
No, their department.
So when it, when it says provide Martindale with financial information required by nonprofits, there, is that mean just a visual? We don't, we don't get a hard copy or a digital copy?
The nine ninety is available online twenty-four seven to the world. So we don't have to go over there to see it during business hours. We could call it up and put it on the screen right now.
Um, which in that form is like a budget of the previous year?
So what it?
Current and prior year on each of your jobs.
So what, just give us a, what's an IRS Form nine ninety? What kind of information?
Revenue and expense.
Nothing on them. Just a revenue and expense.
It's, it's not going to give you a line item accounting like similar to a budget. It would just tell you large buckets, grants received, revenues received from gifts, um, and then expenses, operating expenses and capital expenses or, you know.
Functional expenses.
Functional expenses. So it's, it's going to be um, it's, it's a looking, it's like looking at a tax.
Like if, if we wanted to look at the libraries like right now, we would be able to pull it up.
Scroll, scroll down a little bit. Um, somewhere down on there, it says the books and records or, first off, go to the top, sorry. It says somewhere up here, it says open for public inspection.
Right there on the right-hand side.
Okay, so, oh, so it's open to anybody anytime. You go down further somewhere, it says the books and records are in the um, you know, control of, or it must be on the next page, maybe.
What you want to look at is, if you want to pull up Texas, Texas Business Organizations Code twenty-two point three five three.
Yeah, there you go. Number twenty.
Texas Business Organizations Code twenty-two three five three. And what that deals, so what that deals with is availability of financial information for public inspection for nonprofit corporations.
So I mean, what's the big deal about having financial? I mean, uh, you know, our, our original document just has, has the request an annual finance, what's, I mean, so give me the, you're the accountant.
Go down a little further. You'll see it's got, uh, uh, keep going. Pat, it's going to be a number of pages before you get to the actual incomes. And it shows what uh, source of statement of revenues. So you see what you'll be provided there. Um, fundraising events such as that, um, and then any other income in that second section there? Program service revenue. Okay, go on up. Um, so these are the kind of items you're going to see. And then if you go to the next page, um, you'll see um, this is expenses broken down by grants that are given. And then you'll see the salaries of officers and directors and key employees and everyone else. And then you'll see payroll taxes and go on down and you'll see other so things like um, travel, IT, you see those are the basic things you see.
So, so I mean, but the question would be is under Form nine ninety, if they have under a certain threshold of revenue, once it, I think it's fifty thousand, they get to file a truncated version.
You're right.
Of Form nine ninety. So this, thi, this would not be applicable. Form nine ninety wouldn't be applicable. I think, I think the threshold is fifty thousand revenue. I, I, again, I don't know what the library brings in. But what you, the, the catch-all to this is if they don't trump that revenue source, then you look to the local government, sorry, the Business Organizations Code. And what it states is that they are required to maintain financial records and annual reports. That i, if it's not already contained in Form nine ninety, it's contained in another form. And then that is, it must be made available for public consumption. Because that's, that's the whole thrust of a nonprofit corporation is you are taking a grand benefit from the state. The state's saying, okay, this is fine. You're, you're, federal government's saying, you, you're not paying certain things that, that, that other people do. So for the benefit of that, you've got to be open. And so whether, whether or not it's Form nine ninety or under the requirements of the local government code, that, that obligation exists.
But right here on the contract, the way that it's stated, it says that including the IRS Form nine nine. So that's telling me at the council version that they have a nine nine.
Maybe.
But there's a nine ninety.
I, I think is what it's.
Postcard, it's called.
Yeah, that's right.
Check the box. Our revenue is under this.
Right. And, and this, and then the whole idea is if the revenue of a nonprofit corporation is low enough, the, the federal government doesn't put that in nonprofit corporation to the burdens of exercise of providing a rigorous accounting. They say you've got to, you've got to bring in at least X every year before you have these rigorous reporting requirements. So, but yes, Du, Dwayne's right. The, 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 the general form that's used by nonprofits, the breaking form by Form nine ninety and, and, and the, the truncated version is the, I think, nine ninety I or there's, there's some others.
There's an EZ as well.
So practically speaking, the, the change that would, would it, from what the city council had proposed, it removes any, anything related to funding balances and um, descriptions of funds received other, other than it would, it would show you amount of grants received, amount of funds received in different buckets, but it's not going to give you like a fund-based accounting like you do in a profit loss statement. But same reviews with.
The, the only thing that I would add to that is, is if they're, if, if in the event there's not a, 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 a live reform nine ninety is that the information be made available is an information under twenty-two point three five two of the Business Organization Code. And that, that would, that would be the catch-all where you would get it one way or the other.
Yeah, and that's, they have to do it in a similar sense, at least.
Kind of the business.
So that includes? All, all financial records?
Right. So, so I'll shut it to you.
This is my understanding. When I, when I was dealing with nonprofits in Nevada, you, it didn't matter. You had to, I knew about the nine ninety form. You had to, as a nonprofit, the, certain things had to be open. You didn't have a choice.
Okay.
It's, but you get a benefit. You, you had to disclose certain things. You know?
Okay. Yeah, what, what, what our attorney showed me was that it includes an annual financial report type of thing.
Yeah.
Um, so I assume it's not in Form nine ninety, but. And I, I mean, and it, and it, and the law doesn't describe specifics, which is good enough. Just, I, I have one.
It's got to be.
And it's accurate.
It must include a statement of support revenue expenses, statement of change in fund balances, statement of functional expenses, and a balance sheet of each file.
Balance sheet of each file. Okay, so that, that, that would cover it.
Right. And so, I mean, that's what the law requires it be maintained. So the, the only position would be you've got to maintain that. So make it available for us to inspect.
And then so if we want to, if we're going to, since that's the law and if that's what we're wanting to reflect, I mean, is that something that we need to take back to the library and then they discover what they're afforded then?
I, I, I think, I would, my suggestion would be, this might be touch upon legally with our attorney, but my suggestion would be to include the reference to the specific statute in the modification that we would send back to the library to consider.
But you're okay with this wording that a writing would include the reference to this?
It's a very different business process that they're set up though. Instead of them providing a report as a deliverable to the city, it is the city going and requesting this information after a visit.
So based on your understanding, the way the, the Texas law states, are they required to print a copy? If I walked into, to a nonprofit, would they be required to give me a printed copy? But that is the, the rub, yes?
No, I, I, I mean, but it's mainly the electronics thing. I mean, everything is electronic, so.
Well, that seems to be the, that seems to be the rub right now. This is the sticky point of the whole negotiation.
Twenty-two point three five three.
Yeah.
The, the, the next portion, twenty-two point three.
It is, it is can the city obtain it and now it becomes in the city's possession.
I, I, that, that's, that's. I was always under pressure. It was required to be available. The nonprofits I had dealt with before, of course, they were bigger. Okay, so he, that's another animal.
It, it's, it has to be made available for inspection and copying.
And copy.
And there's some dates. Charge a reasonable fee for preparing a dollar required to file was the E-post card.
Okay, so then that would, that would be necessary then.
But, but in other words, what's, what's listed there is really nothing more than something that's there in that contract.
Yes, it's, well, so what, what Dwayne's saying is he looked them up on the, the website.
On IRS.
And provide the truncated form, not the complete.
Yeah, nine ninety.
Yeah.
See, it says.
And so the, the.
Tax year twenty twenty-one IRS Form nine ninety N E-post card.
And you, and that'll show it?
It is, is the library, okay, it, it, it's, it's a nonprofit corporation under Texas law.
Yeah, that's.
It shows in its hardware.
Uh-huh, but that doesn't show anything.
Right.
No, because they're under the threshold requirement.
Says grocery receipts not greater than fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's the point that, that I, I was making is that it, 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 it effectively could end up being a nothing if the revenue was low enough.
And, and you're checking to see if that applies to the Texas as well?
You pulled it up, yeah.
No, it does because that's federal law. Form, Form nine nine, Form nine ninety deals solely with federal law. So you, you are a we said a dry erase board.
Yeah.
Um, a, a, a company in Texas can be a corporation, a nonprofit corporation, an LLP, an LLC. You, you go down the list of all of those things. There's different reasons, but when you, when you uh, when you, when you get to what the federal government does with taxation, and, and Dwayne can supplement this, you, you can elect essentially three things. You're taxed as a corporation, you're taxed as a partnership, or you're a nonprofit. And, and, and if you're a nonprofit, there's different reporting requirements. And nonprofits that have fifty thousand of, of revenue a year or less file essentially a, a nothing nine ninety and nonprofits that have fifty thousand or more annually file a, a much more thorough and elaborate nine ninety. Did, did, Dwayne, did I get that wrong?
Yeah, uh, there's three levels of report.
Yeah.
I forget what the thresholds are for the next two. But um.
So in, in this case, the question was, can you make copy?
The under twenty-two three five three, they have to make it available.
But what's, what are they required, how does the detail with regard to this? Nothing.
The records, books and reports.
That's, that's different though. The nine ninety is a form that is filled out because federal law requires it. Okay, so this up here on the screen is Texas law. So the nine ninety is over here, it's federal law. What's up on the screen is Texas law, two different things. And Texas, in addition to Form nine ninety, imposes requirements on a nonprofit to maintain certain financial records. And so they've got to, in addition to a Form nine ninety, maintain what Texas law says they've got to.
And so that would be, that would.
We're quibbling, we're quibbling about business process.
Yes.
But, but do, do.
It makes me as a deliverable or come over and ask for it?
This, this basically says they have to provide it no matter what. Nonprofits have to provide it.
If I go to their place of business and ask for it.
I, I understand. I understand that city, that's always been my issue is like, when I got told that certain information didn't have to be available as a nonprofit, I went, say what? Because that was my, I've done a lot of work for a lot of nonprofits, you know, printing work and volunteer work. I was like befuddled by that whole thought process. So I was very confused by that. And I said, was something I missed? You know, or was this, like you said, below the threshold was what I was under the impression? Because it was just a postcard, like you said, it was, when you guys said they only had to file a postcard, I was like.
Yeah, but I verified it at a second location. It says this organization is required to file IRS Form nine ninety N.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I got, I got the, the letter wrong.
So even if we approved the, you know, the contract, even if it still has the verbiage that they proposed, but if it's Texas law, then we would still be able to whoever would want to would still be able to request it.
This is all kind of.
Right?
Yep.
Um, doesn't really make a lot of sense that we're still quibbling about it right now.
Yeah. So because I think now, I mean, just what I've heard, you know, our attorney say and what I've heard everybody, you know, talking about and uh, laying it all on the line, we all know, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to accept the proposed library uh, services agreement for a period of one year and three months. I just wanted to make sure with the time that that was the correct time. Okay, so then the verbiage on here, um, it still says, uh, motion to accept or deny proposed library agreement for a period of one year.
Uh, the, the change is reflected in the actual contract agreement.
So, so it's one year?
It's one year.
For one year, beginning on January first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
I'm second to motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion?
Claire, I want to clarify. So that would be in the contract. This new verbiage, library requested chart change.
Yes.
Is, is.
Yeah.
Uh, replacement.
Okay, okay.
And you're okay with that?
We don't.
I would prefer to have the call out of the statute, but we, we don't, it's, it's not necessary in order for us.
I mean, as long as we all understand that we've had this discussion and they know that, you know, I don't want to hear any shenanigans later when we, someone walks over there having others.
They give us a postcard.
The requirements.
No, no, wait, let me, I, I, I get it, but, but I mean, to, to the point.
I just want to not, there be a, I don't want anyone coming here in public comments in two weeks and, you know, there's upset people because the law is the law.
I mean, look, okay, ju, ju, just so we have this, the law is the law thing is, is correct.
Yes, sir.
I, I, I make the vast majority of my living trying lawsuits because inevitably in every lawsuit, two sides see the law differently. So I'm telling this room what, what, what I think the law says. If this city wants to ensure, no questions asked, that it gets the information under twenty-two three five two, then it needs to state in this contract that anyone that shows up will be given access to the information set forth in twenty-three two five two. That is the only way to ensure that it is, is for certain because.
That's the one that says fund the balance.
I would add, provide copies under twenty-two dot three five three at no additional expense. Might be something we want to ask for, or if that's the city wants to um.
Or just electronic copies.
So I mean, we have a, a motion and then we have a second. So then I guess we could vote. And if somebody else wants to redo it, then you can. Right?
That works.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
I oppose.
Uh, I'm opposed.
So the motion dies, is there?
If you say you're opposed.
I haven't said anything.
So we still have one more person.
I want to, I want to reference the code. Because I don't want there to be any misunderstanding.
So then you oppose.
I oppose. I want, I re, I want to redo it. We make a motion to approve it with the addition of the verbiage that we're referencing. Is it?
Okay, if you oppose, then let me say that, then motion dies. Go ahead and make a new motion.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
I make a motion to reapprove the library service agreement based on this information with the addition of referencing code twenty-two.
Twenty-two three, not two, twenty-two three five three.
Twenty-two three five two and twenty-two three five three.
Of the business.
Of the Texas Business Organization Code, right? Is that what it is?
Okay, we have.
I think I was a clarification on the motion of whether the city is agreeing to pay the fees for the copies of the record report or those being negotiated as part of this treaty.
Say they're soft copy.
I mean, the law says what the law says. So, so I think there's a choice. Either we just pay them each time we ask for a record or we negotiate the contract and we don't pay them. I, either, either one is fine.
A lot of great boards.
Hey, hey, Harper, please.
Yeah, yeah, we know, we know. We know.
So, so what about the cost? Were you going to include that in your motion or?
It's, it's a preference. I, I, I don't really have any.
I mean, it's. I mean, the, the, the reasonable fee is, is generally the, what, if someone comes to the city and makes public information requests, it's, it's what the going prevailing rate is for, for the state on, on a, on a per-page charge.
Time, time is like, I think, if a city's content. Time, time is like, I think, if a city's content, like fifteen dollars an hour over a certain amount, it's like ten cents a page or something. This is a, this is a given report. Big sticking point, but it's worthy of clarifying, so we don't have a discussion later. Well.
I mean, I, I would imagine the records are not voluminous. We, we might be looking at twenty-five pages of documents top, so, I mean, what, what is it, twenty-five pages times twenty-five cents at most?
Yep.
Yeah, plus, plus an hour work, twenty bucks an hour or so.
How many times are you requesting a recorder?
I mean, well, the problem is, is if each council member starts going and asking.
Well, then, then that's not, it's, it's an individual council where does it, they're maybe in a different capacity. The, 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 the only way that the city can spend that money is that the city elects to spend that money.
How about if we get one free copy?
There you go.
One, one free copy.
I just, I, did, did somebody made a mo- and, and then a second? Are we discussing?
That's your motion.
So, they, and included in this, the city would get one free copy.
If you want.
If they wanted to.
If, if you want to, and include that as your, as your motion, but you don't have to include free copies at all, it's in the point of discussion.
I, I think that, I think that the strength of the amendment that Matthew suggested is rooted in its consistency with the law, and the request for one free copy makes it inconsistent with the law. If, if in some insane alternate universe, the, the, the library says, we're gonna charge you a thousand bucks for, for, for this copy, then, then, then the city can report the library for clearly violating law, which I, I have no expectation it will within this.
Okay, is your motion done?
Yes, I hope so.
Okay, is there a second? I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Uh, yes, I would like to discuss, um, because I feel like if we were going to, I wanted to go ahead, I made the motion the way that I did, because I think with hearing, you know, with the law, that that would just kind of stand, that we would be able to fall back on uh, what we've all heard in this room, that's on public record, that's being recorded, and, you know, so I thought that would be efficient, but I think now, since it needs to be in writing, I think since they've had their attorneys involved, that it would only seem like as a, as a city, that we would allow them an opportunity to discuss this with their attorney, and then that they would come back to us and say, yes, we do want to go into negotiations further, or no, we don't think that that's right, but I think like, we can't just, uh, force, um, something on them that they haven't even had a chance to review as a board, or have a consultation with their attorney, as we've had with ours.
So, so the way that I think of it is, if, if, if we make the modification, if this motion passes, that would be the new terms of the agreement for the board to, for their board to consider, and at that point, they can either agree or, or propose different language back to the city, and each time, it's an offer of a contract.
It's still different than this change that they made back to the, to the council. Is, this is a change that was done after the staff negotiated, so they made, they made a recommendation.
We're happy with this contract, plus our modification, you can take it.
Yes.
And approve it.
And approve or not approve, or make a counter argument. Um, all we're done here.
But I think that's so much like, you know, going back and forth with attorneys over the library. If something clearly states in the law that we should be able to see it, that's still more time with their attorney, rather than just like, being a city and being a community with our li- library, able to have like, discussions and say, yeah, well, we agree with that, or no, you know.
That, that was, I mean, and I agree with you, but that is to some extent, what was proposed by the city about asking for financial statements in, in originally, and they changed it. And I, I backed the library completely on saying that they were not allowed to, they were not required to provide information, certain information was not, not required because they're a nonprofit. I always questioned that. I just, it, it's just my experience, because I've done a lot, I've done work with them before. I trusted their judgment completely. If the state law says that, I, I, you can't not follow, follow it.
We're just making it clear.
It's still different than, it's being clear about other things, you know.
The, the, the reason I think it's important to vote on is because the, the library has the absolute right to say yes or no. But the only way the library can know what it, it needs to vote on is if we give them a draft. And the only way that we can give them a draft is if we vote one up or down. So, I mean, thi- this is, this is not us saying, here's the contract, take it or leave it. Because this is, this is the city voting to make a change.
And if that change is made, then it's sent back to the library, and the library can say, yeah, it sounds good, or no, I'm not gonna do it.
And then, but, you know, and then it, we've already approved them getting the money, so we didn't even approve the contract before we approved giving them the money.
Yeah.
So, that, that's, that's perplexing.
When it comes down to it, this should be a simple, they look at it, understand it, thumbs up, and they come back and we can prove it, like.
Or they won't need, we won't need you, because it's not.
So if they, if we, uh, approve this, and then they said, yes, we're good with it, then it passes, it doesn't have to come back before the city downs.
One, one of the most effective tools that I use in, in mediations and negotiating a case is, if, if, if things are right on the edge, right on the fence, I will, I will get a, a, a final agreement, and I will have my client sign it, and I will send it to the other side and say, hey, if you just sign this, this is all, this is all over with. And so there's, there's some real benefit in that. They, they, they can say no, they can rip apart, but sometimes that helps break a law too.
So the money that we are gonna give them, that we already agree on with the fiscal year January first, is when their fiscal year starts, and that's when they, we were required, or was it February to get, give them the money?
Well, we, uh, we're gonna give the money in mi- like, March first, or was it February first? It was after the tax money comes in. That's when. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Do I, I only heard one aye.
Well, you have a second and a second.
Aye, aye, oh, okay.
Three votes, three.
All right, so the motion carries.
For the record, could you just finish the motions and?
Oh. And are there any nays?
Any nays?
I'm a nay, okay.
Nay.
A nay.
Nay.
One nay or two nay?
Two nay.
Two nay.
Are you a nay?
Yeah, I said it three times.
Okay.
He did, he said nay three times.
I guess I should have called it individually. Right?
Oh, that's done.
Neither of you did it so many times.
Okay. Um, so we'll go, we'll move back up to the city account report.
All yours.
Second one.
Okay, this is a report that, uh, you notice I prepared it on the third, so these numbers are a little bit dated, but not, uh, materially. See, uh, the cash balance of the general fund was a, a little under twelve thousand dollars as a reference of the month. You see the street and road fund, court restricted, utility fund, total at the, uh, at the bank, uh, First Lockhart Bank, eighty-four thousand seventy-seven dollars. If you look, uh, down a little further, you see the general fund overflow. It's not that the city only had twelve thousand dollars in the bank, it was, the rest of it was in a, uh, you know, interest-bearing account. One that you see at the top is just the one I write checks off of each week. Um, emergency fund, two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Uh, the Public Funds Investment Act, where all of these, uh, excess funds are stored, you see the largest being grant funds and, uh, the general fund overflow. Six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars there, plus a little bit left in the capital fund, nine hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars is what we had in the bank on the third. That's how much our, uh, fines to the state, uh, have paid down to, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
What are we roughly paying monthly out of, out of that comptroller fine? Our sales tax wasn't in about seventeen hundred a month?
Yeah, it's, um, like, I think this last month, I believe we got about, uh, ten thousand dollars, so it would have been two uh, last month, but.
We paid down about twenty-six thousand dollars last year.
For the whole year.
We wish we could pay that off faster.
That's free, it's, it's free, dude.
It doesn't matter, it's still a huge debt.
Well, why we, why, you know, well, as you can see, we're quite solvent. Yeah, we're quite solvent. It's free, it's a free loan.
We're still getting over five percent on the.
Yeah, uh, you know, I, I'd have to look to see this.
Come, if everything's come down.
Yeah, it, this week, though.
Yeah.
It's come down, so, okay, so that's the, uh, the cash balances. The next report should be the general fund, uh, budget report. And, uh, this report here, October twenty-two through September twenty-three is the fiscal year. So you can see that we brought in seven hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars on a budget of six thirty-eight.
Question about that, that, the investment interest, is that the interest account?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's, it, it, yeah, it's rolled into those other funds we just saw, but you see, that's what we've brought in interest. Uh, next section is personnel. Four hundred and thirty-six thousand on a budget of four sixty-three. So that, uh, came, uh, uh, within budget. The reimbursement from the utility for their part of the payroll, you see, is thirty-four thousand. Uh, slightly less than budget.
I had a question about income, so the Park Mobile app money, since this is the end of the fiscal year, wasn't, it, oh, it wasn't a line item then? So that's why it's not a line.
If I don't have it on the October report, call me out.
If you're looking for where that might be, it's going to be on item fifty, seventy, under your income line, who's miscellaneous, it's likely where it's where it's being placed.
Oh, but that's just the, mm-hmm, okay, but I thought we actually had almost twelve thousand.
The difference between, um, what, what's actually been received versus what's been paid. To, what's been paid to Park Mobile versus what's been received by us.
I think we figured out we collected fourteen thousand, or billed, twelve and fourteen thousand at the time you and I last spoke, but.
You've had expenses since then.
It's not expenses, it's just, this report is only through September, and like, four thousand of that came in in October.
Oh, okay. Oh, from the September earnings.
Yeah, okay.
Are you happy with that, Mr. Clay?
I'm getting there.
All right.
Okay.
Get you happy real quick.
Hang in there.
Then we have, uh, we have operating expenses here.
Can we talk about like sixty-six hundred? I mean, how does this guy get within fourteen cents of his budget?
Sixty-six hundred, uh, going down a little, I guess. Looky there, that's because he comes in and asks me three times a week how much.
Well.
That is, hey, roll it over, Mr. Wood. That is one hell of a.
I hope there's nothing, hey, I hope there's nothing immediate happening in the next couple of months.
I had a question about sixty-eleven.
No, that's over, that year's over.
Oh, yeah.
He's got a new budget.
You know, he did, he did park for a living, watch it.
Here you go, group insurance is.
Okay.
So the sixty-eleven, that amount right there is for the four people who are on the insurance. And.
Next year.
And it was, uh, it was less expensive, you know, it's funny, that insurance was already up to the level it is now two years ago, but we raised the deductible and lowered it down to that, and now it's raising back up to where it had been.
But, but, do we, do we budget fifty for next year?
Yeah.
I think so. I think forty, forty.
I thought we, I thought we.
We, I think in the budget in twenty-three, there was an extra.
It's gonna be ten thousand. Nope, that's gonna be more.
For.
Because it's four people, right?
Yes.
You expected the voice to be or something?
Yeah, yeah.
And, and you guys gonna, you're gonna have, you're gonna have to shop that, we shopped it.
We did.
Oh, yeah.
We, we shopped it, the, the, to get similar premium rates, had a higher deductible. It, the. Yeah, but we can shop it some more. But then, the initial broker that we worked with for, for quotes gave us stuff that is comparable to what the, uh, TML.
It was still over nine hundred dollars a month an employee.
Over nine, really?
The difference was like fifty.
You're paying extra because you, the, the police officers, you pay extra. They put you in a different pool?
Well, I don't know that the, i- i- it's based on like, uh, you know, that SIC code or whatever, so, I don't
you know, but it's also based on number of people in the group, so.
You don't have a lot.
Yeah, you don't have a lot. Basically, TML is treating us the same way the open market does.
Yep.
Which.
Yeah.
And that's their prerogative.
That's not nice.
They ought to give us, they gotta work with us, you know?
I gave us a couple of options, but.
We're not financially.
But like, for me, like, so like, for me, I work, and then they deduct my check for my insurance, but here, you don't get deducted for your insurance, that's, that's added to you, that's like an added amount on your check, right? You don't get deducted for it, because the city pays for it a hundred percent.
That can change. The city, uh, under the TML policy, the city's required to pay it, uh, sixty percent. But currently, in this statement and in the budget in the future, it's at a hundred percent. All right.
For the individual, not the family.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's good, that's better than SMC ISD.
And you, the insurance used to be only a five hundred dollar deductible. We were one of those plans that they combined, complained about, that our deductible was so low that it was costing them too much money, but when Sylvia retired, we raised it up to three thousand dollars. It was my, my recommendation, it's like, you just got a bunch of guys on it, and they're not gonna use it nearly as much anyway.
What's your, what's your deductible now?
Three thousand.
Can you go up higher, like to ten thousand?
Five, but that's, that's a huge risk.
Yeah.
Big risk.
You can go up to five, but it only saved like fifty dollars.
If, if you're going up that high, yeah, to this point, you go up that high, your premium changes are very little.
Oh, really?
So, so you're paying.
Because I used to be self-employed and I'd give you a brilliant, big.
You're saving only about two thousand dollars in premiums, but you're taking a risk of like, four thousand dollars, and so.
Gotcha. So it's five down, five, you said five?
Three still.
Still three.
Three, yeah, it's three thousand.
Or was it thirty, or was it thirty-five hundred?
Is it three thousand, thirty-five hundred, my, my, because there's two close, we got our.
It's pretty, that's middle of the road, yeah.
And if we were to do the health savings that he's talking about, it would, you know, go up even higher, like seven.
Yeah. Very minimal premium change.
Yeah.
Okay, operating expenses. Sixty-five hundred, that whole section.
I was wondering about sixty-five, sixty on travel expense, it was two hundred percent of the budget, five five thousand twenty-one. That's for like, going to training, or?
We had a lot of, um, local travel expenses at one point, that were being consumed by hired employees, um, that we've since remedied, that might be contributed to this to some degree. Also something that's gonna be in our HR policy handbook is the use of personal vehicles for official duties. Because we're being covered under a travel expense, where we're, we're, we're not doing that to the degree that we were. Um, but it's something that we're gonna want to address policy-wise going forward.
So you see eighty-two thousand, seven ninety-five of an eighty-six thousand dollar budget, so that that's what they plan there, you see the, uh, also the negative amount is the reimbursement from the utility or overhead. You see the, also the negative amount is the reimbursement from the utility or overhead of the, you know, their offset of those expenses. And then below that, we've got other expenses.
Okay, I pick on, you know which one I'm going to pick on, eighty, twenty-five engineering.
So some of that is reflective of incoming funds received, or the engineering, most of that's going to be covered out of the R P. Right now, it's in our general fund, this is something that, where I've talked about as we officially close the book, there's a few areas where we need to do some journaling between different fund accounts. I believe.
So I was looking for that, I was looking for that claim number that we, that we spent that we ended up not, you know, qualifying to the green.
If you go back up to income and look under five, two, zero, zero, you'll see an incoming of grant funds of twenty thousand. That's some of that, but there's probably some more transfer like items that we need to look at. Street roads is another one to be looking here closely, that's, that's one where we have an issue on, so.
Yes, I have a question, but I went to the. Because I'm trying to get that number that we spent on the sidewalk that was just a true expense, I understand that some of this is going to be handled through.
I can give you, if you're interested in that, we can pull the invoice.
I'll, I'll follow up with you later on that.
Yeah, right now, all of our engineering costs are coming out of the line.
That explains. And then that, we went to, we're street and road, there we go, right there, you know, you're, you're on, keep going, keep going.
Eight oh, eight oh, then.
Street, so street and road. Repair, waiters budget. Does that include when we fix the road in front of a, after a sewer tap, is that expensed under that?
I think so. Yeah.
So when we did the repair over here, and then we bill them for that, that line item, for that work.
I've not billed them for that.
Someone can work on.
But that was my understanding, right?
Yeah, the, so the sewer tap is a deposit and then they pay the expense.
If we didn't build them correctly.
It's something we have.
Did a good job.
We would have.
We paid, we paid for it, so.
It looked nice so far.
So there you see the surplus at the bottom, hundred and twenty-three thousand for the current. The next page should have detailed expenditures for the month. On the county appraisal district, by the way, we got a refund the other day of some nine hundred dollars. I guess they, if they don't spend their whole budget, they send it back to the people who support them.
Fine, nice enough, then reject the budget.
Hey, is our sales tax kind of going up since the duets opened? I was just curious.
It's not sending up, it's on a sixty-day lag.
Gotcha.
Yeah, this is only September.
Gotcha, sixty, that answered my question, thank you, sir.
I guess it should, is it will, is it hopping?
Going pretty well, yeah.
What's the backside, thirty-dollar statement, please, for the real question?
Yeah, but we only get
a quarter of a percent.
Like it.
We get a percent.
Percent.
Yeah. One of the eight, we get an eight, but we get one percent.
One percent, yeah. Three bucks every statement.
All right, so here's the utilities. You see, uh, like we, service fees, we're right on the money, between one being over and one being a little under. Total income, three thirty-seven. And we see the various expenses there.
Like on the, on the credit card processing fee, like we have, we encouraged our citizens to like sign up online to do the automated thing, and then they get charged extra too for processing their card, right?
If they know a credit card, but they reverse it, if you go up higher, back up in the income, there should be a.
There's a cross.
There's a credit card, a twenty-eight hundred there. Whoops, you went too far, go back down to utilities. See the last line there, credit card usage fees, that's supposed to offset.
It does.
But to clarify, like if you sign up for automatic payment, you don't pay extra. But if you call in to pay the bill, then you do.
Yeah, and there's, there's over a hundred people on that, that list, this last month, there were so many people on it that I set up a threshold, you know, for safety reasons, so somebody couldn't A C H too much, and we went over it. So I'm probably going to have to adjust that, because over a fourth of our customers use that now.
Thanks for clarifying, because, yeah, I would just think that if they did do the automated, we wouldn't want to be charging them, you know, the credit card fee, so, that's good.
Yeah, we don't, and we're not charged either from the bank. Makes it easier on everyone, really. Okay, going down through, we are, there's the, the other side, see those big administrative overhead and payroll, that's the other side of those entries you saw in the general fund. Reasonable. The, you know, the big one is the sewer system repair and maintenance, seventy-seven. Waste water plant is over. But we transferred, you go on down to the bottom. By the time we made transfers, you know, from the grant funds at the top, these others here, it basically broke even, but we had to, we had to use grant funds to, to do that, so. That's your utility fund for the year. And this is special revenue funds. When you talk about the streets, see the first line there, street and road tax, we brought in on that quarter of a percent that we take from the sales tax that went over here, we nailed that one almost as close as the parks, and.
That's in some of the revenues.
And you see what all we brought in there, fifty-one thousand, it's pretty much right on plan. Now at the bottom, we didn't spend nearly half of it, but if you see on the street and roads there, there's funds in that budget to cover the overage in the general fund, that's one of the transfers that Jared and I need to work on to get the general fund back square, so. You know, the question is, yeah.
When we do that, it's going to result in even a greater surplus in the general fund. So when we talk in the next agenda item regarding the usage or allocations and transfers of surplus, it shouldn't affect those decisions that we make tonight.
And, you know, we have a special bank account for street fund, and that account, you know, could go up twenty-six thousand dollars if we, we decide to transfer the amount of the budget over there. Maybe not twenty-six, because the other ones are over budget by seven.
Something.
Something like that. All right, so that's your special revenue fund, and this is it.
Okay, thank you, thank you, I guess we'll go right into three point two, since we're talking finances.
Yeah, so as we just went through the budget, you'll see that we had a number of surplus deficits. But as we look at the end of the year, I'll go to the, the next slide. Go ahead and make your adjustments a little bit. As we go to the end of the year, there there's different schools of thought on how to handle prior year budget surpluses. If we do nothing, it all just continues to be placed within the general fund overflow. And so for this discussion, it's, it's probably helpful to refer to the bank balances sheet that Wayne just presented, that first, first paper, to kind of know where, where the funds are actually going to be placed. And so this just helps account for the surpluses in the rent bucket. It has been, prior to my arrival with the city, and since I've been here under prior managers and Mary Glaze, we have used the end-of-year budget surplus, which we've had each year I've been here, thankfully, some years higher than others, to fund the capital improvements of the city, the lock car open. So where we, the trade space, the area of decision that you get to make tonight, general fund has a surplus of a hundred and twenty-three, almost a hundred and twenty-four thousand. That number is probably going to go up a little bit as Wayne and I kind of close up the end of the year, but for now, that's a, that's a solid number for us to use. Utility fund pulled a little bit of a surplus, but that's not really consideration for tonight. Keeping a note on the special revenue fund, those funds vary by activity, so each activity is restricted within itself. And so like hotel taxes are restricted themselves, if you look at last year's budget, we've actually created a deficit within the hotel tax fund. We cover that deficit because we have prior year surplus that covered that sort of bank balance, you know, balance of check, quite literally. Something to be aware of. On the street and road, you do have that surplus in the street and road on the restricted fund, however, the general fund has a deficit, we're going to make those things match as we close up the year. Strictly technology, I want to work with Duane on this one, but I thought, I might be looking at wrong numbers, but each, there's several court accounts, they're all restricted within themselves, you just need to spend some time allocating receipts and expenses accordingly, so that, that's on the special revenue fund chart. How many to our larger, you see all these court listed things, and it's like, two dollars, like four thousand dollars, what's going on? In a larger court system, those numbers would make sense, they would have budget items for that, but since we hold court, well, we held it today or recently, yeah. So we're not using as much of the security, we don't have security bars, so, some of the things don't apply, we just need to make sure we go after those line items. So one thing that's not into that five twenty-three was the park restricted fund, that was something that was created after we passed that fiscal year twenty-four budget. We now have a park restricted fund. And then my, the proposal that needs consideration, consultation with Councilmember button is to move last year's park revenues into that restricted fund as if they would have been prior to that, so go to the next line. This is, this is where that happens, so I have three recommendations. I think voting on each of these in turn as we go probably makes the most sense after we discuss them all as a whole. The first one is to transfer the twelve thousand, three hundred and forty dollars that were generated revenues during the period of fiscal year from the general fund to the restricted parking fund. Park fund, generated parking activities. Now, there is a difference here, it's not, not, not a big thing, but we only receive check payments from Park Mobile of nine thousand dollars, but we're going to go ahead and transfer twelve thousand dollars because that was the activity that was produced within the fiscal year. That's on the question. This is an upper down.
These are going to get it anyway, because it just shows on next month, so.
Exactly.
It's going to go, it's going to go.
It makes you happy, is that what you're saying?
But the, but the twelve thousand, as you say, that was generated during fiscal year twenty-three will go into the restricted fund, and then the projected amount that you thought was for twenty-four was roughly around fifteen thousand, I think. So that projected amount would really no longer apply, because you're adding the twelve thousand that's in actual money.
No, so, so the, it would apply, every dollar received from Park Mobile goes straight, does not go to the general fund, it now goes only to that restricted fund. And so you're going to have a twelve thousand dollars plus anything generated in fiscal year twenty-four. I think we can all say that our assumption of fifteen thousand dollars was conservatively low, if we generate twelve thousand dollars only till right August, September, we start adding in the payroll of April, May, June, we could be seeing revenues closer to thirty thousand dollars potentially. So if it goes above, what, dollar for dollar, fifteen thousand, thirty thousand, wherever it may fall, it's all going to go in that park restricted fund.
And then this, the budget for twenty-four was twenty-fourth, how much was it, twenty-four or twenty-one thousand?
So the, I, I have it here, but
I think it was either twenty-one.
Each budget as or at least it's a, I believe it's a statutory requirement, but I might mistake this, I'll put, call this, best practice, potentially even a statutory requirement, is that we have a zero-based balance budget. Part of that is, the way I apply that rule is you only count revenues received within that year as the zero basis for your expenses. I'm not counting prior year savings to zero out, I'm not going to spend out every dollar. So the budget doesn't consider prior year or existing fund sources, we could do that, we haven't done that, my recommendation is we don't do that, unless you're doing it for a special project, and then it becomes kind of a case-by-case basis outside of the budget. But within the, just the annual budget itself, look at what you've received within that annual budget, what you've spent within that annual budget, whatever happens outside of that is managed outside of the budget, now. You don't have to do it that way, but that's, that's the way that makes the most sense for me.
Yep.
So at the end of the day, say thirty thousand dollars are generated in fiscal year twenty-four sale, now with Park Mobile, you'll have, and no dollars are spent, you'll have forty-two thousand dollars in your park.
But we do have.
Park, park bank account.
But we have operational expenses for the parks that will be paid out of the Park Mobile app, or the money that the city is giving out of the budget from both.
Both, yeah.
You use the budget first until it's gone, or?
It's, it's like, it's going to be the exact same as the street and roads, and so we have a choice, what you can go for.
Yeah, I, I mean, if we're doing, if we're adding both of those funds to the park fund, but they're separate, because we've had the operational money and the money generated, I, I would just like to see the operational expenses paid for out of the twenty-four thousand, so the restricted fund could get bigger and bigger, and thus the public can see the strength of the Park Mobile, and then we would gen, we would have to allocate less money from our budget for the next fiscal year.
I, if I, if I understand you correctly, yes, there should be some cash buffer in the park maintenance budget that's generated with Park Mobile before it becomes self-sufficient. So you'd want to be able to cover, you know, a season's worth of expenses prior to jettisoning, cutting all park funding out of the general fund, I think that's what you're saying.
There's a good chance there could be fifty thousand dollars by the end of this fiscal year. And then that, and our budget is only twenty-four.
So, yeah, within this next year.
Don't spend it.
We could, we could have a full year's budget ordered by then, and next year, this year's twenty-five budget becomes self-sufficient.
Yeah, we just have to see what this year does.
Ideally, you know, you, we want to be self. Ideally, you know, we want to be self-sufficient.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right. I know you're, I know you want to have some cushion, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do we, you want to go through all of these or make motions as we do it?
The first, each one.
It's, it's good, I mean, we'll make motions on each one individually, but so you know where all the money's going. Might make a difference to you.
Hey, Sam, so make a motion.
Okay, then I'll make a motion on number one to allocate money from the general fund surplus to, from the overflow to put the amount mentioned, $12,340 from the general fund into the park restricted, Park Mobile restricted account for fiscal year 24.
It's not related to fiscal year, but everything's part of that.
Everything from 23 to go into the restricted fund then.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
unanimous.
Any opposed?
Congratulations.
Okay, so the motion carries.
All right, so this next item, prior, prior to me coming to the city, the city councils have passed, established a emergency fund savings goal of $250,000. I believe this happened after the 2015 floods. Recommend that we allocate, transfer beside $16,000 to the emergency fund to complete that savings goal.
Wasn't it $250 last year?
That is the goal.
It's been a little short.
It's 230 something, like. And it's growing like a thousand a month in interest. Right now too.
It should be, yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to allocate $15,836.39 of the general fund surplus to the emergency fund, satisfying the emergency fund balance goal of $250,000.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Then item three, this is taking the remainder of the surplus and now allocating it to the capital improvement fund. The capital improvement fund is used for a capital expense, which is presently defined in our purchasing policy as an item over $1,000 and with a lifespan of greater than one year. In the past, we have used that fund to do a resurfacing project on Lockhart Street and purchase a police car.
And Charlie will probably be asking to buy computers for the police department. So do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to allocate $95,638.64 to the fiscal year 23 general fund supply in the general fund overflow on the bank statement balance sheet to the capital improvement fund.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion?
Can I, can I show you all how that'll work mechanically? If you go back to that first page on the cash balance of my report? So let's get that a little, so I'll make that a little bigger. So see this one down here that says PFI A, this section that's 629,000? What's going to happen, really all that's going to happen is bookkeeping. That 282, $15,000 of it, well, no, I'll actually have to move it into the emergency fund because that's a separate account.
Yeah, they'll go from that general fund overflow to taxable.
Right, and then the capital money, that 95 that you approved will go down into this one that has 128 in it right now. So that's a separate fund. The, the park money will become an additional line item there, just like, whoops, go.
Oh, sorry.
See the hotel tax? It will be like an additional line item. It'll stay in that 629. It'll just have a account number or a line number.
Do we, do we have a motion for a couple of one in a PFA interest-bearing account? Or is it right now it's just a savings account?
No, it's a separate account.
It's a check account.
It needs to be an interest-bearing account.
It's interest-bearing. It's at the same place as all these others.
Same, same, same interest level though, right? Same, okay.
Yeah, the top section are the non-interest-bearing accounts, the ones that I write checks on and payroll and all that. This is all.
And this gives us enough cushion. We don't have to worry. You have plenty of cushion.
Yeah, because you're only taking half the money. I mean, there's 282 there.
So yeah, 282, we, our, our expenses between the general fund and the utility fund and you give them off, they're covering $70,000. And so we'll still have in there roughly $200,000. Gives us a good 90-day cash operating balance in our general fund overflow, more or less.
You'll start getting money in the next.
And then, yeah.
60 days, for sure.
It's already coming. The property taxes are already coming in for this year.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. Okay, so.
Mayor, can I, can I make a request to go to 3.1 next since we.
Yes.
Citizens here, please.
Oh, yes. That's where we were going to go.
Okay.
So motion to accept or deny. So on Monday night, I didn't know, and we had to get the agenda out, if we were going to have anything really to talk about on this one. And my feeling is that we still have a lot to be worked out, but I didn't know if the city council wanted to talk about anything to do with the Northwest River Road grant.
Mayor, it might be helpful, since we're on record.
Yes.
For this one to kind of give a very brief recap on the conversation. I wasn't there.
Okay, so, so on Monday night.
But, but, but this also, this is recorded on YouTube and Zoom.
Okay, this past Monday night, we met with a lot of citizens that live along Northwest River Road to talk about the modifications that the engineers were proposing to change in the design of how the biaducks were going to work down the middle of the road. They were going to be less, instead of two side by side, there would just be one. So it would go from a 10-year flood, yeah, mitigation to a two-year, basically. The road at the Shoe Tree would come to a 90-degree corner with possibly a stop sign on each area to slow traffic down because once we do get a good road there, we'll probably have people speeding through a residential area. And that was one of my concerns. There will now be no land acquisition on either side. It would just be in the current, either right-of-way or easement, utility easement. There's one or two more things to still look at.
There are increasing that utility easement on that Plains Drive side.
They are increasing it.
So interested, yeah.
Yeah, not, not.
You're right, that's.
Right, so.
Just the easement, not a right-of-way. There was one thing we were going to ask Thomas Turk to maybe look at, and that would be behind the Plains subdivision, the water tends to pool there. We'd like to see if maybe there would be a way for it to come out to the roadway beside Quentin Matthews' house. And I have not talked to him about that yet. So it's, the water tends to flow that way anyway and come down the roadway. Matthew might want to help me explain.
Yeah, it's, there's actually a drawing in the public information request that I received. They actually showed the exact flow. So it's coming from the upper left and then coming across the circle. And then it basically comes down and exits behind the, the house there on the right, which is Quentin Matthews' and Patricia's house. And the land to the right, the, the empty lot that's wooded is actually, you can see it just by staying in the road, is actually raised. There's like a berm there, and that is where the flow is. Use Google Earth, it tells you the same thing, that the elevation in the middle of the road where the dip is, is about three and a half, four feet lower than the mound is. And so that's its own, if you will, retention pond that's been created. And that's where the pooling has been occurring on those properties. So the, the thought process always was try to eliminate that and provide the pathway for the water to get to the road. It appears to me, not that I'm an expert, that at one point, many moons ago, that was man-made. It does not appear that the dirt would have dumped in that form or fashion. It makes it very nice.
Maybe to protect the school or something.
Yeah, or just, like I said, this would be a retention pond. You know, someone could have just, that could have been the retention pond for the field. I don't know. It's off, never even think about where that was. That, that, those houses were only built 35, 40 years ago, so there was nothing else there. So that was part of the other tracks. So I'm speculating, of course, but Mr. Turk did say he would at least walk the property again to look at that, to see if there was any potential solution. It was something that he had looked at when he first discussed the grant with the previous mayor. And he did recall that, but the direction was stick to the road, move it the way he did. So he said he'd at least look at it and see if there was something positive to maybe be suggested from that. We'll see.
At the land, where the land is, of the eastless?
Yes, somewhere that tried to get this water away from pooling. He was just going to look at the, look at the land.
But the eastless land? Eastless land? Or whose land is that?
Lucio.
Uh, Lucio.
Lucio, yeah.
But that's the one we haven't gotten in touch with, right?
Right.
So he can't go on there until he gets.
Well, he has permission.
Well, he has the, yeah, the letter to.
He has permission.
Right-of-way.
To, to touch, he has a.
The right-of-way.
There's an electrical right-of-way there anyway, so he has access, he has an ability that you and I can't. He, as a service, is allowed to walk the utilities. And that's where the water lines go.
And, and Thomas indicated that this is kind of a preliminary drawing. There was more work to be done.
And then, so then on that side now, since it is? But I remember the meeting previously before, it was all on the other side because of all the cables and everything on that side of the road. So what's going to happen now?
Well, the scope of the mound of the biaducks going down the middle of the road is smaller. It's half the size. So there won't have to be any land acquisition.
So two things, like, I know that I talked to, to David Harrison. He said he had gotten a letter from the city to sign it to store the heavy equipment on the property. And he, he wasn't going to sign it because of reasons. And where would the heavy equipment be stored at and parked at?
Well, there's still a lot to be worked out. That's why I felt like the design wasn't ready to be solved.
That's on the plans that were sent out, you have, it's in your emails when the mayor emailed you all of the packets. If you read the Harrison one, there's one discussing this and there's one discussing the temporary easement. Is this area here, this is where they were going to park their.
All of it.
Yes. So there's obviously a concern to be made with regard to doing that.
That's his, that's the Harrison's property?
Yes.
So they said no.
I don't know what they said.
They said no.
I haven't talked to him about it.
Yeah, they said no.
I mean, we talked to him about the project, but he has, he was still just figuring out the project.
But no.
He knew about the meeting.
Yeah, just no heavy equipment on the Harrison property. So I was wondering what his plan B.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion. Due to all these questions and concerns, I'd make a motion to table item 3.1 to, for the mod, to modify to general land office GLO, community development block grant mitigation funds, CDBG dash MIT contract number 22085 dash 040 dash D288 Northwest River Road Drain Project.
Okay, I have a motion to table it. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, is there any more discussion?
Just like whenever we do have a future meeting, sorry, Sam, just for us to make sure to have the cemetery also there, there, in their plans.
Yes, they're always important.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was going to say, is that we still haven't gotten the results from the sonar, the detection of the 31 unmarked graves in the cemetery. And also Martin Dale Water Supply has not signed off on this agreement. His engineer has not signed off on the agreement of the proposed changes of the location of the water lines on Northwest Road. So we still have some things to work out with this.
Adrian, we do have adequate time before we make a decision, right? I mean, if I remember that discussion.
Well, I believe that grants do, I used to be complete 2025 early, but we.
We do, we have, we do have time.
Are behind on schedule. At this stage, we should have probably already been hitting those construction bids, but.
Yeah.
It creates some urgency.
But they have extension possibilities as well.
Right, but we can't guarantee those.
But we need to close this out. This needs to be, make a decision as soon as possible.
The longer we keep, you know, just the more things away from the city getting on to new business.
Oh, so when's our, I, I, okay, so that could be their next agenda item. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so we'll table that. Okay, and the last item is, I'm going to let Adrian talk about this one because we've talked about it before on adequate for Zoom.
Any changes since last time?
No. This, this remains the same, no changes have been made or edits. This is about the meeting policies, public and recognizing Zoom audience and the audience in person and really deferring the public to speak during public comments and public hearings instead of, during council, council discussion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like I said before, I have an issue with, with the workshops.
Sure.
It's always been kind of the standard norm or protocol or history that workshops, the public are able to speak.
We don't have to necessarily call them workshops, moving on.
But, but no, no, no.
Or.
No, no.
We, we could exempt it and modify it.
I, I, I've been here a long time and workshops, I want, I want the public to interface. I know understanding council, but when it comes, that's what makes Martin Dale special, is I want the people to be heard and we have workshops that they can have a discussion with the council and the mayor and staff.
Well, i- if that's the case, then I welcome the make a modification, modification in a motion to exempt workshops from.
Another. I implore the council not to take that action. The workshops are intended to receive detailed technical discussion and advice of staff and other experts. If we want to modify the nature of a workshop to include a town hall-like public participation meeting. I'd, I'd, I'd hope that'd be an exception to the rule because that is going to seriously impede us going forward, especially as we get into comprehensive planning. There's going to be dedicated meetings just to solicit public feedback and input. And if the city councils and the staff are unable to collaborate with the experts in drafting those, those plans in advance of those public hearings, it's going to be pure chaos because nothing's going to be able to move forward. We have to build.
I, I disagree with you.
And present that plan for feedback as we go forward.
Because we've, I've had history with this town. I mean, a lot of times, a lot of times the people in the public are our experts. Because we've, I've had history with this town. I mean, a lot of times, a lot of times the people in the public are our experts. I could give multiple examples. Uh, there could be controls on that, but.
I, I do not deny that people in the community set themselves out as being experts, but it is up to the, the chair of the meeting. Most cases, the city council would be the mayor, having zoning would be the chair of the planning zoning, to determine who is an expert or invited to participate in the meeting.
Well.
So, so if there, if there are opportunities for experts within the community to participate, that can be arranged in advance. And they could be identified as experts to participate in that discussion.
I, I think, I don't think I believe that long as is there's proper, if everybody's polite and do their three minutes, whatever. If they're out of control, they can be gabbled. And if they're too much out of control, they can be removed. So that, that issue.
Three minutes of a, of a comment. Well.
Yeah, but we can't, but the problem is, we can't have the dialogue. We can't have the dialogue with, with, with the public, with, with the council, and that's what makes Martindale special, in my opinion, and I.
City council supposed to be representative in form of government.
Oh, uh, well, my pers- that's my personal opinion. I mean, what we had Bundy was hot and heated. I got a little hot and heated, but. That's what makes Martindale nice is that we're able to.
That also wasn't city council workshop.
Okay, if it's, if it's a council meeting, I agree, but if it's a, if it's a dedicated workshop, it's always been this way in Martindale. That the public has participation.
And I think we, those distinctions can be called out forward and then pu- and then notice of the, of the meeting and.
So.
Described as, as such, so.
So clarify. So if we say, we say we're gonna have a workshop in the public, we'll be able to.
I don't think, I don't think simply calling something a workshop should invite a, a open democratic debate amongst all interested parties in the community regarding the issue. I, I think if we, I think the, I think that's an exception, not the rule. Doesn't mean we can't have one frequently. But there has to be a dedicated space and time just for the council members to get invited and collaborate with staff and experts on formulating policy.
Could that be, could that be clarified at each workshop? We could have particular workshops, say we will have discussion with the public? Can they interface with the, can it be specified in that specific?
I think that would be uh something that would be called out and noted in the meeting. I, I would refrain from setting an expectation that all workshops are inviting public, public participation.
I didn't say all workshops. I said.
But by, by making a change like that in this resolution, it would, that would in essence become the standard, not the exception.
Uh, I have a problem with that. I don't have the rest of you count.
About the council, you know?
Okay, so I sent an email to you guys about some of my questions or concerns about it. Um, you know, I sat on the other side for quite a while, came to a lot of meetings. Um, and there was a couple of situations where I did not get to speak. I got cut off a couple in a P S T meetings by leads. Um, where I wanted to say something and I thought I had a very valid point and I was chaired and, you know. I, I don't think that if we're, if we're sending out an agenda seventy-two hours in advance and there's no data, like, you know, just use Monday. Um, we had, you know, someone on Zoom who didn't wanna, didn't have an opportunity or didn't wanna, you know, to uh get her head wrapped around the new plan. Because it was not presented till three hours before, no fault of anyone in this room, um, no opportunity for her to, to absorb that. And so she had, wanted to make comments based upon uh, you know, a workshop where she did not get to complete what she felt to be uh. Uh, her, her words, you know, committed to this, uh, to this chamber. And uh, she got very frustrated and it was a little awkward, obviously, for everybody. But um, the, the point is that she was an affected landowner and she should have had an opportunity to speak. And she didn't get a chance to fully absorb what was, what was being presented. So if they're only allowed as a public, Joe Bo, Joe Bo, uh, consumer here. Is only allowed to do it before the meeting begun and the packets are not available and the, and the uh expert has not actually spoken. And they have something that they would like to say that that guy is full of, mm-mm, they're never gonna get a chance to speak. And we're not giving them, the, the public an opportunity to provide any potential insight at all unless we decide to table something. And so um, I'm concerned about that, you know what I mean? I understand we're representative of the public, but we're not perfect. So we make mistakes or we're not fully informed and sometimes there's an expert out there that's a, you know. As Jay always tells us, he is from the city Houston Parks Department and in my vast experience with it, I hope he's listening because I like to make fun of him. Um, that based upon my experience when I did Heritage Park, that this is what I learned from that. And he qualifies himself very well, uh, but he does have value because he does have the experience. Uh, that's something that I, I want an opportunity to always listen to someone like that when it's specific. You know, we've been blessed with the mayor being very accommodating and open with regard to getting public input. But when you put something in writing like this, we get a mayor that is not accommodating.
Oh, yeah.
Then we, we, we're not gonna get to hear anything, you know, we're not, we're not dictated by one party. One person is basically saying, be quiet, next.
Um, unless and until a new council passes a different resolution, so.
Let me ask a quick question.
As.
No, wait, ask the mayor.
As a citizen, may I? This is, this is for the city council.
So.
This is gonna.
So your. My, 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 my recommendation would be in that case is we could include um, on this resolution or a separate resolution. Requirements regarding read aheads and that the, that the city council will not entertain any um decisions without a twenty-two hour read ahead. Or, or not um, take a vote until after a second reading or.
Or so, or some other. That, that was.
Or some other method to provide a little bit more space between the flash and day. Um, of, of the discussion and then the policy being created.
I was.
I, I would, I would think that.
No, that's, I did, I did.
In, in other public forums and other legislative bodies, those, those constituent concerns are held outside of the, the formal meetings. Right? That's lobbyists go to Washington to talk to the congressman, they're at this state house in Austin. The same could be true in Martindale during, during the period of votes as, as sort of.
We're not voting, we're not voting in a workshop.
I'm gonna love it, say anything anyway.
We're not voting in a workshop.
And I don't have the information and I want to tell my council member, Mr. McClab, I want, I don't like this. I have a question about this. I have a question about this. There is no time. If he's supposed to, if I'm given the information, we come to a meeting and they make a vote. How is Mr. McClab gonna know what his constituents want? That's my question.
My, my issue is, this is what we've always done in Martindale. It's what makes Martindale unique. And I think it's not asking for a whole lot. I mean, we could, I have no problem designating, we can have certain, we could classify the workshop. Okay, this workshop, if it's real technical and we got experts and it's, it's something that, that we think the, the, the public could just hear and be educated. I have no problem with that, but if it's something like Northwest River Road or somebody's property, they, they have a right to express their opinion. Now, they need to be polite and they need to be, have proper quorum, and if they don't, they need to be stopped or escorted out. So I have a problem with that. That's my, I don't know how the rest of you guys feel about it.
An alternative, an alternative would be so having a, make a modification, just instead of having a public comment period. Um, limited to the start of the agenda, you have a public comment period for each agenda item. Now, that could significantly slow down the meeting, but that is, that is appropriate um, under the law.
And, and, and the mayor had done that for me on two occasions that I remember. I specifically went before the meeting and asked to wait until that particular topic. And I actually asked to speak after the expert, you know, because I wanted to, I didn't wanna go and start tossing smack about something that I was not fully informed about.
So, so I, I, I wanna get this right. I- is the concern that there is not the opportunity for Q and A at workshops? What, if, if.
Correct, that seems like a good.
One of them.
Okay, what's, what, I, no, I'm trying to find out from Mike, Mike, what's, what's the concern if you're to distill it down to my problem is X?
Well, it's discussion with our, our public, you know, I mean, their concerns like uh, we talked about Northwest River Road, that was very heated. Their landowners, and we're, we're a small town and we do have this kind of a cu- cool community here that you're able to come in and talk to the elected officials. You go to San Marcos, she got your three minutes. Hey, your three minutes is over, you're done.
Here. I mean, so, so I, I guess.
So there's no, there's no interaction with.
So, so if, if you, if you could then craft your ideal language, it would say what?
Well, uh.
Well, San, San Marcos.
Maybe, maybe like.
I wanna hear, I wanna hear what Mike says.
We'll call that, I'm, I'm saying, not, not council, workshops, the public can, is a, can interact. Ask questions to the council and the staff, say a three-minute limit.
Per individual.
Per individual.
Okay, got it. So, so you, you would agree, and, and here's, here's what I think Jared's point is. If you, if you, if you set a standard that says the public can engage in Q and A and interact with the council at, at these meetings. Without building limitations on it, you have then passed an official city rule. That the public can then say, no, you can't stop this because you've given me the right to do this, which conceivably would be defensible. Now, I can tell you in the seven years that I've been here, oh, six, six, I, I've never seen that come to pass. So.
Come in on a side of it.
May- maybe so, but what, what you have to do is build in some type of, of limitation. It, it, I mean, three minutes, may- maybe that's reasonable, maybe it's a minute, maybe it's five minutes. I, I don't know.
It's always been, we always use three minutes.
For, for, for both the comment, but not for Q and A. Now, the oth- the other thing is, you could have council members, because I've been in meetings before in other cities. Where, where the council has said, thank you for your question, but I, this is not, I'm not answering. So, so you could conceivably have uh members of the public that would say, I wanna ask Councilmember Vila's question. And she would say, thank you very much, but I'm respectfully gonna refrain from answering at this time. So you can impose that burden on an individual council member. So, I mean, the question is, I, I shouldn't say the question, it, it is a worthy and noble thing. You just have to place some bookend on it because if you don't, then you have a rule that can be weaponized against the city and like Jared said.
I agree.
Lead, lead to, so wha- whatever it is, I, I think if there's a proposal, it has to be clear and definite.
And then like for me as a council member, I think like getting out there and talking to my constituent and then making myself available. Although we might not have the information at the time that we do, but the meeting is a time to like discuss stuff. I know that we're volunteer here-based and some meetings are, are super long, you know, and. I mean, I get it. I know that we're elected and that we're supposed to do this, but like also with, with me, like I have a full, I have a full-time job. And like whenever I come to the meetings and I'm supposed to be making decisions for my constituents. It's gonna be based on the information that I'm getting, you know, as well from the people that I'm talking to in the community. But to what the city has already found out, the information and talking to the people in place and then also to the experts who are here. Who can also give us the information. So, I mean, I, I'm lucky that every meeting that we've been to, I think that we've allowed that, you know, anyway. So, um.
Yeah, we've been lucky, yes.
Yeah, we have been lucky that, that we have allowed that. But I mean, that's like me, I, at the last meeting, I even said, let's have another council meeting. Let's have a workshop. Let's do a pre-workshop to make ourselves more available. Do I need to just like comment five right away as a council member and say, hey, I'm available an hour before, you know, to talk to whoever needs to come? So Mike, if you wanna do that or any council member wants to do that or has a flexibility to do that, I would say.
There's nothing like an individual coming into an elected body. All council people are present, the mayor, our staff. And that's when you get the full information.
Can you give me an example of where that happens?
Well, every workshop.
We, we.
Now, now, you know what? If we, if we wanna call it, if we wanna call it something else, I don't, I don't, I don't really have a problem with that. As long as we have something that the public can interface with the elected officials.
They do.
Well, I, I know in San, San Marcos, sometimes what they do is they have a first and a second reading. And so if you do the first reading, the polit- uh, the comments come from the public. We listen to what they say, we think about it, and then even though we perhaps can't not immediately respond. If, if we say we're gonna make this a second reading, then the public can come and speak that second time. And then there's a lapse between the first and the second reading and we're not making that decision that may be such a pertinent decision during that first reading. I mean, we have never done really, the o- only time we do a first and a second reading on something is when it's been tabled.
Is that during a, is that during a workshop or is that during a meeting?
That's during a city council meeting where, where they go first in a second reading.
Oh, I agree. If the expert make, answers that something and then the public gets a digest and research it.
Yes.
And then come back and say, I don't agree with that or why didn't they think it is, or I'd like you as council to at least brainstorm over here before you vote. There's, there might be another option. And the public can sometimes be creative and come up with solutions. I'm telling you, right, you know, I, it's happened, but I've sat out there and then it made, you guys haven't voted on stuff right away and. I talked to you, somebody, sometimes the people in the council, but sometimes with the, the staff and they come back and said, oh, yeah, no, I got, yeah, I got you. I, I see where you're going, you know, and, and, and it, it affects the, the public.
I understand with city council meetings, we can't have that. I totally agree with the workshops. That's a time that we gather information and, you know.
So, so a workshop is the same thing as a San Marcos work session. A San Marcos work session is not with public participation. So if you wanna make, what, what we're describing is, 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 is different than the intent of this.
So we.
Prior, prior, so we, the issue is semantic. We can, we can describe what's the meeting in here as a work session. That if that's what people are more familiar with in the San Marcos context.
If you, if you.
I don't wanna be like San Marcos.
Hold on, hold on.
They're here.
I don't wanna be like San Marcos. I don't know, I don't like San Marcos.
How about, how about, hold on, hold on. Prior, prior to the commencement of any workshop, the council shall vote if it will allow a Q and A session of no more than thirty minutes. So that way you can carve out thirty minutes.
I'll bet you.
And you, you, you vote before if you wanna do it. That's interesting.
That's an interesting.
Okay, so, so, so you have, you have a maximum timeframe and before each meeting you vote if you wanna do it, a free workshop.
San Marcos does, does that too. They have a pub- a public comment period where they can't respond. And then they have a question and answer session where you ask a question and they can answer them. That's exactly what, what they do. And if you're suggesting that, then that's a way to have dialogue.
Yeah, so pri- prior, prior to, pri- prior to holding a workshop, the council shall vote. If at that workshop, they wanna hold a Q and A session of no more than thirty minutes.
That sounds awesome.
That's good.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Why didn't you say that earlier?
He gets tired of hearing us.
I, I was thinking about Mike voting to exercise him in the later.
Workshop, but they will vote whether to have Q and A. Do you have to attend?
Yes.
No.
Can we put that in?
And if you have to answer.
If he doesn't have to, we should put it in there.
Okay, Mr. Attorney, go ahead and work it for us.
If it's a city council line, if, if. You, you know, at what point is, is the cit- the, the purpose of the meeting to elicit community feedback? Or is it to elicit staff feedback? Because there have been a sub, there have been at least a couple of occasions. Where we've had meetings. I'm not sure why I attended for several hours on a Saturday. And I prefer to not attend those if I can.
Administrator.
Another, another example.
In the case of a workshop, if, if it's a, a policymaking discussion that. In the case of a workshop, if, if it's a, a policymaking discussion that, that we're providing input or analysis on as a staff, that's great. But if it's, if it's like the, um, Skull Bridge Triangle discussion, where anyone does just a grievance fest.
Yeah.
But you know what, that's democracy.
You're at the point, I'm, I'm, look, I'm not.
That's democracy, democracy.
I mean, that's, that's.
You're missing out, dude.
Yeah, but may, 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 maybe so, but, but, but I think Jared, Jared's point is, is the purpose of the workshop to, to allow the public to have a forum to speak? Or is the purpose of the workshop to?
So the city council.
I think what you said.
Those were all public comments at the beginning. It was thirty later.
I think, I think, I think they just stated though, we can vote whether we want that thirty minutes or not.
But you know, whenever it comes down to it, like workshops and yes, the citizens, we want them to have their thing, we want them to have their thing. We, we are not here every day having conversations with the engineers and with the staff and everybody. It's these people, you know, the, it's Jared who's, and the staff who's having those conversations with those people. So really, they, they, I mean, you know, their input is valuable as well.
I think, I think we're crafting a policy based on what has been happening with Freeland and Turf for, for the past couple of months. And, and it's over, and in over six years with the city, this is, it's, it's a unicorn. So, so we, we are crafting a policy around the exception to the rule in a very extreme way.
They already said that the whole purpose of running this is to control Zoom.
Like Dwayne keeps it lower and lower.
Well, we could table this again.
I, I, I like what, uh, what Bud said, I think we could come up with some kind of a verbiage like that.
I think with the, um.
The motion would be that to include a provision that says, at the time any workshop is scheduled, the council will vote that vote whether or not it will allow a Q and A session at that workshop of no more than thirty minutes.
That's.
So, so, so you're basing ten people could talk for three minutes?
Yep.
As a question.
You know, one of the problems.
This is in addition to, to the public comment, because if someone's gonna make a public comment, that's fine. Public comment is.
So what if you had, what if you had thirty people that wanna talk instead, you know, ten people, maybe fifteen people wanna talk?
Well, public comment in the beginning is not.
I know, I know, I know, but I'm saying is, I'm agreeing with you. I'm just saying, I, I don't, I think we could, we as a council, we're smart enough, I think, that we could determine at a particular workshop, if we got technical experts talking about things that we don't know about and they're experts, I agree. But if we're talking about somebody's property or whatever, that they're affected, they have a right. Cause I, I'll tell you, if I was not an elected official and I'm out there and I can't talk, I'm gonna be pissed off. Because I can't, I won't be able to say anything, you know?
But you always have the.
Did the council establish the minutes?
We have the opportunity to ask questions.
In that motion?
I mean, but, but, I mean, listen, this is, this is tantamount to a, a, a public hearing. And in the six years I've been here, there's never been a, a, a public hearing of, of thirty minutes. I mean, it hasn't happened. Now, we have, we've had contentious meetings where people have lined up at the door for, I think we have the, the, some employee, employee decisions. Yeah, now, I mean, we're, we're, we probably had an hour and a half of public comments. But we've literally never had more than fifteen, twenty minutes of Q and A and, and public hearings. And that was like, it was really extreme. So, I mean, the, the, the point is, if, if you want to create a, 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 a public hearing, Q and A type session, just put a reasonable bookend on it.
You can always extend it, the mayor has that authority, but he also then has the power to say, that's enough. We've been here for three hours, but, but.
But then it also has to be like, you know, if somebody's gonna speak and say something good, then they should be able to speak. If somebody's gonna say something bad, they should be able to speak. If you like that person, of course you're gonna let them speak. If you don't like that person, you may censor if they speak or not. So it all depends on the individual, who the mayor is at the time and what, how they are, how they are as a person and how they are with the other person.
So, so, so if someone were to ask me at this point in time, my, my advice would be to make a motion to pass the resolution with the following amendment. At the time a workshop is scheduled, the council may elect to have a Q and A session at that workshop of no more than thirty minutes.
Or, and the mayor can extend that.
That's.
No, I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Well.
Leave it at that.
You know, part of the problem is people don't find out the truth. They come here and they just wanna beat you up.
Well.
And then they don't, they don't really.
And that's why, that's my point, that's my point is, they have to speak beforehand and not before the expert gets to say something. So therefore sometimes they're speaking, you know, before they get a chance, you know what I mean? And that's why my position is, we, I want to allow whoever that Joe Bo, Billy Bob expert to tell us what, you know, I'm making this proposal for this grant or whatever the case may be is, and then it allow, allow the public to absorb.
Yep.
But we don't get a chance to do that if the packet's not available in advance, if the, if there's not a opportunity to speak before the council votes.
But that's.
So that's, that's.
And most of the time the packets have been available.
I get where you're coming from, I get where you're coming from, I like that idea, but I also think as council members, that thirty minutes or whatever we allow, the concerns will be expressed. We need to absorb that and then make sure that we're asking the questions that the citizens are concerned with.
Because here, here's, here's, here's the cure-all to all of this. No, it's, it's yours, the, the grand cure-all is, if, if, if there's really exceptional backlash, someone makes a motion to table.
Yeah, that's been mentioned. But that's why we're elected officials, because they're letting us to be smart. They're not putting us to be.
I've had some, well, I've, well, I'm not gonna say anything, but I'm just saying, this is what we've always done in Markdale. I'm, I'm willing to negotiate somewhat, but I'm gonna insist on public comment. And they can discuss with us, I'm gonna, I'm gonna insist on it. What I'm saying is.
We're not taking it away.
But I'm just saying, we can, we can word it like he says, but I, you know, I've been here, I've been doing this a long time.
That's awesome that we're even a lot like thinking.
Which we've always done it that way, Nick, this town's. Yes, we have.
Not putting it in a, not.
Well, I'm a document, but it's always been. We've always had a workshop and people can express their opinion, sometimes it gets ugly, that's a democracy.
Mike, this place is ten years?
Well, not, that's, we're not there yet.
Yeah, but we need to start gearing that up.
That's what everybody says about this town, wait, it's gonna grow, it's gonna grow, yeah, let's grow, let's, let's pay the parking lot. This one makes Markdale.
But I think we're trying to make something like out of a this side and a that side, but we've always. I'm sorry, Mike, but we've always been pro-public comment. We've always been.
This document, we won't be, that's my point. The way it's written, it will not be. Now, Bud, you made a good suggestion, I'm willing to negotiate this.
I think this is, I think this document is very pro-public.
Yeah, well, I don't see it that way, the way it's written.
Can you point out which section?
But they won't let public comment, we already talked about this, I, let's have a poll, hey, guys, what do you think?
It does say public comment there, but it's limited to three minutes.
I want, I want the interaction, but you know, I'm just one council person, so.
I, I always thought when we had a workshop that we would receive comment from the public and it was a question and answer and dialogue, don't we always have dialogue during a workshop?
They're gonna change it now, buddy, we're gonna change it with this document. It's all over, right there, we approve that, it's all over.
All you get is a mayor that wants to follow the rules specifically.
If you get the wrong mayor, bam, you're out of here, done, I've been done that way. I have a history of that, so I'll leave it at that.
I find that extremely.
I don't believe you at all.
In the past, I have been.
I think I'm of course a skeptic.
I almost, that almost threw me out one time, you know?
I just asked our attorney, where on here does it say what you're saying, that it shuts down the public comment? He said that it does not.
Mike, I think your complaint is, it's not what it says, it's what it doesn't say. You want it to say more.
I wanted this, like you said, I mean, you know what, let's just put it down on the table, I'm, I'm, y'all wanna vote? However you want, if you guys wanna vote, y'all make a motion, I, I have a problem with the document. If you want to change that, if, if you.
Language, if you wanna make the motion, make it.
But your language, I would be willing to use your particular.
The law, you already had a long motion due.
All right. Or we wanna table?
Dude, you, here's your chance to make the motion.
You know what, I'm gonna make a motion to table this resolution. Two zero two three eleven dash sixteen, to have more interaction and, and we, and we can look at this document and put our concerns to our attorney and to our city manager.
I'm tired, seconding, I'm going home.
I have a motion in a second, is there any more discussion? Okay, a hearing then, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so the motion carries. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion that we adjourn at nine seventeen PM.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.